Good evening and welcome to the September 23rd, 2020 Gilroon Central School District Board of Education meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and rise for the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have one item on our agenda tonight, which is the board goals document. And I emailed out a document to everybody, so you should have gotten your email. Let me know if you did not get it. So I think everybody added notes in the Google Doc. There's probably several pages of notes. And I think if we took them all, there'd probably be at least 10 goals, which I think is a lot. So I took the ones that we focused on most from the last probably year's discussion, and I put them into this SMART goals chart. So maybe everybody want to take a minute to look it over? Any questions or comments? I sent it to Damian. I don't think I sent it to Neil. I'm sorry. Thank you. My plan was to just go through page by page and see what your feedback is. And I have some comments on the first page. And I know we talked about this last time and not having some specific metrics that hopefully the district office team could help us come up with. But does anyone have questions or comments on the first page? This is really talking about the achievement or opportunity gap. And this came up from that discussion of the ESSA scores that we looked at and realizing that there was a population of students that we weren't, the district as a whole, we weren't serving well. And so that's where this came from. So I'll read the goal, "To increase student test scores at state and local level for all student groups." And if you remember, the ESSA data was broken down by different demographics. And so that's the goal that we came up with. I think Ben mentioned, or we all talked about last time that we discussed this, that this year is maybe not the best year to have metrics for test scores because we don't know what metrics will be used by the state. Or I don't know if anything's changed yet. But I was hoping that maybe people have ideas or district office have ideas on what kind of metrics we could use. And I put this till 2024. So, you know, it could start the following year, assuming everything is back to normal, close to normal.
Do we need to specify like an amount of increase? Or is it just enough to say increase? Would it be helpful?
Well, I think it's going to depend on what metric we use.
Yeah.
So often you'll see, you know, they'll increase the level, number, the percentage of students who are proficient in ELA by 5% each year, or by 10% over the next three years. So the difficult part without knowing what the metric will be is like, what's a realistic number? So Damian, I talked a little bit about the metrics of this earlier today because we won't have state data from last year. And we don't know if we'll have state data this year. I have a hope about that, which I won't share, but you probably know me well enough to know what it is. But there are other things that might be more important to us this year, like attendance, engagement, especially for our subpopulations. We can look at student participation in higher level courses. What else did we talk about, Damian?
Discipline rates?
Discipline.
Yeah, I mean, some of the non-academic metrics, I think, are, and I appreciate that you use the word opportunity gap here, not just achievement gap. I think those are equally important, in some cases more important. So, yeah, I mean, the other piece that we discussed is just even if we did have state testing data for this year, how reliable of a measure is that going to be in light of the past, you know, year and a half essentially of disruption to everything? So, you know, branching out a little bit and looking at all the other variables that factor into student achievement and student learning seems to be important.
We would have things like college admissions and things like that, right?
Mm-hmm.
At the end of the year?
Yeah, I mean, I would almost want to avoid the test scores.
Right.
Even if they brought them back, because that really what we want for, you know, is that the goal is to improve test scores or to improve, you know, educational outcomes? So I like the variety of metrics.
So I, you know, attendance and discipline rates, college admissions, how would engagement, would it be part of participation and other activities?
I think that's a big part of it, coupled with absenteeism rates.
Okay.
But I also just want to piggyback on what Ben just suggested. I think, and I know that this is a conversation that's happening in the field quite a bit, I think this might also be an opportunity to maybe think about alternative assessment practices, not just because of the pandemic, but moving away from the pandemic. Our, you know, test score is the only measure that we want to look at to show student achievement. And it seems like we're in a position right now where those are being questioned somewhat.
What about the level of coursework? Is that something we can look at?
Yes. So participation rate in higher level courses, yeah, would definitely be.
Because we've increased, that's new this year. I mean, there's a lot more opportunities this year, I think, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we've added a number of different electives. We'll do so again next year as well.
So we have numbers or data from this, from last year's. I know that obviously some of it will be probably messed up from the end of the year. But attendance and the type of courses offered, even college admissions, that should probably be there still, right?
Yeah, we'll up to the point of closure, obviously. But yeah, I mean, we can certainly pull attendance data and discipline rates, participation rates, all of those things will be available to us from 1920. And then, you know, 20, I'm losing track of my, 2021 as well, as we go forward into this year.
Would engagement include involvement with clubs or teams and?
Certainly could.
Other ways that students have reached out to become active?
Yeah, I think it, you know, anything that provides some metric around student connection to school and remaining connected to school, I think is open for us to take a close look at.
Okay. What will teachers be doing in terms of assessment with students this year?
Well.
What's the advice that you've given?
Let me start with the elementary level. I mean, we're doing our absolute best to administer our benchmark reading assessments, our benchmark math assessments. Of course, we have some students who are in person, some who are remote. You know, it's definitely a challenge right now. But those are going forward. So we will have that information at the elementary level. I think once you get up into more the hybrid model, I think we're really largely dependent right now on classroom-based assessments. You know, we do have some places where we're utilizing some more common math, like at the middle school, they're starting to use a math assessment that we already use at the elementary. It's called iReady. So they're starting to work that into the middle-level math program as well. But it's hard. I mean, it's difficult right now because you have kids in so many different places. And in some instances, they're working with multiple teachers. And it's hard to kind of package that into one particular assessment program at this point. I think we're learning as we go. I'm hoping that we're going to, you know, as time goes by, be able to put our finger on some things that we think are reliable in light of the many variables that are influencing what we are or are not able to do with assessments right now.
We have no word from the state as to what their plans are?
No, not yet. I haven't heard of anything.
Well, the official word is, there is no official word, which means that, you know, policies and procedures that are established are in place because last year they were waived explicitly. But if I can editorialize a little bit, we have so many large urban centers who are 100% remote. It seems to me to be a heavy lift to ask those school districts to put their students through the paces of three through eight testing and Regents exams. That's just my humble opinion.
I mean, I'm in agreement too. Just to take the science regions, you have to do 1,200 minutes of lab. And I know that's pretty difficult space and remote, what counts.
I think that part actually has been waived.
They've given flexibility with that, yeah.
Like some virtual stuff.
But even, even so.
Well, I mean, you have to also ask, what is it really going to tell us, I think, is a big question. And at the monumental cost that it takes to run statewide assessments, too.
Damian, or Dr. Wiles, do you, is there an academic, like, committee or group that's in the district that would be talking about alternative assessments? And would that be too much of an ask? And I don't know if you've already started discussing that with that group, but to?
We haven't really, in earnest, started discussing that yet. I think we've been so focused on just getting the school year up and running. But I know it's something that has crept up in a number of conversations that I've had with instructional administrators and others who are just looking at it and, you know, starting to wonder, is, you know, standardized testing really the end-all be-all, especially considering that we, right now, are not relying on it? And are we at a point in time when maybe we should be thinking about some different models going forward? And I've always kind of thought we should be thinking about some different models going forward, but now there seems to be a little bit more of an impetus to do so.
Yeah, I remember, I think in policy, a couple of years ago, we read an article about the, it was about zeros and what they mean.
Yeah.
And I think probably now, like you've mentioned, it's been talked about. So would that be something we could add as a goal, is to start the discussion of alternative assessments? I know that obviously is really on the district and it would take a lot of time. But like you said, if everything has to be kind of reconstructed, and we're talking about goals anyways.
Yeah.
Would that go on?
I just wanted to add, it's going to take a lot of professional development as well.
Would that be going under the first goal, under the M column, to begin to look at, find other types of assessments that might work better for us? That might be a goal in itself.
Yeah, I think it would be a separate goal is to start looking at models of professional, or alternative assessments. And then, you know, metrics would be like discussions, maybe at their meetings, their committee meetings for that, or starting to just look into professional development that's available. And obviously, some of that takes resources. So just the start of it, I think, would be.
So it's a separate goal?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Do you see it as a separate goal, Damian, too?
I think so.
Okay.
I do think so.
It's a goal to just get to the measurable part of the first goal.
Yeah. Well, we used to have alternative, I mean, back in 80, we used to have alternative assessments and we had portfolio assessments.
And then they got consumed by standardized assessments.
Right.
The pendulum swings.
It definitely, you hang around long enough.
You get hit by the pendulum.
Oh, I've been hit a few times.
So I'm wondering, given the light of this conversation, if we need to rethink the wording of the, of the specific goal itself, to increase student test scores?
Yeah. Yeah.
But I don't know exactly what to.
That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a goal for this year because we don't have scores.
No, but it could be, you know, take away test scores and levels of engagement. And then we could list the things that we talked about.
Yeah.
Participation, which slash engagement, attendance.
Levels of courses.
Discipline rates.
I think the overarching goal.
Yeah.
Rather than specifically pointing to test scores, is you're aiming to increase student achievement for all groups of students. And all of those things factor into their ultimate achievement.
Right, those would be the metrics.
So instead of using the words test scores to increase student achievement?
Right.
Would you also want to add engagement and engagement?
I was going to say engagement next, yeah.
Sema, do you want me to update the document with what we're talking about?
Sure, I can take your notes and my notes, put them together. Thanks.
And then under M would go the different areas we'd look at? Attendance, level of courses, discipline rates, engagement, college admission?
So what I can do is take Rebecca's notes and my notes and update this.
Yeah.
After and then probably.
So we all agree that that's where we're going?
Yeah, and then bring it back to DOT because they might have like the correct language for certain things as to how things are measured. Kelly, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I think it may be worthwhile to have a separate goal, looking at alternative, alternative ways to measure achievement. Like, I feel like you can even break, we can break that out just as a goal. I think it would take a significant amount of, I mean, it's something we might be able to achieve within a year. Easy is kind of reach out to other school districts, reach out to other professional organizations that might be able to assist just to, because it seems like everybody wants to get away from test scores in general. And we could take advantage of this time. So, I mean, why not make that a measurable thing? You know, we could maybe, it doesn't need to be a five-year plan. We could have one, we could knock off the list by the end of the year of look into this. And then, I don't know how we would, I know it's new, I know it's not, we haven't thought about, or we haven't like, it's kind of a new goal coming out of this discussion. But I think it's worthwhile to pursue because we don't have the answers.
Yeah. Well, it moves us further in terms of evaluating our students and away from just these things we've listed. It really moves towards what we're talking about.
It seems like a goal in itself, if we're all, if we're all kind of agreement that test scores maybe aren't the best way to do it. It seems like a goal in itself to.
Identify it better.
Identify a better way to measure achievement other than test scores.
I know.
A measurable thing?
Yeah.
Well, I think so. Under this, under the topic of close achievement or opportunity gap, I think the two goals then, right, would be to increase student achievement and engagement. And then the second would be to.
Identify.
Initiate looking into alternative assessments.
Identify.
Or identify alternative assessments.
Develop. Develop. Alternative assessment models.
There could be two.
Would we be at the point of developing them, you think? Or identify and develop? Or how?
Well, I just, I mean, I'll caution you around.
It's a lot to jump to.
It's a lot. And.
Considering what they're doing now.
You know, it's a lot, and it's also not universal. So when you think about assessments in various disciplines and subject areas, you know, it's not really a singular conversation. It's a conversation that might have a universal concept behind it, but then you have to apply it to particular disciplines. So it's not going to be a quick.
What would be a reasonable expectation?
Well, I think, I mind, in light of everything that's going on, I think it would be reasonable to initiate the conversation and initiate some professional learning opportunities around assessment practices. You know, the products of that, I think, are kind of a second phase because you need that foundation to be able to engage people in that conversation with some understanding about what we're talking about, so.
Yeah, I think if we, you know, think about time bound, like, that's, that's going to take years. But if it hasn't officially or formally been discussed, and this seems like a good time because of the alternative setting.
People are going to be looking for.
Yeah, yeah. I'm guessing people would be open to that. I know in the past, since I've been on here, that people have, I don't know if they push back, but push back to some degree about test scores because of whatever goes in the newspaper about these lists. I don't particularly look at that that much, but I know it's been a topic. So I'm just putting it out there because I haven't heard from everybody. And maybe everybody agrees. I'm just not used to this.
I think test scores, the only, I think they need to stick around, unfortunately, just because of colleges. Like, they need to evolve first before, you're saying, no?
Colleges are evolving.
Are they?
Especially right now. I don't think any colleges are requiring SATs or ACTs.
Right.
And if it works, which, given the financial climate, I'm sure the colleges will make it work.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I don't, I don't know that they come back, you know, except, except for the influence of the College Board, but to the extent that that is.
I'm 100% agreement with, like you mentioned, all of the standardized testing that's not being required anymore. I think it was, what was it, rank that we took away last year or two years ago?
Yeah.
And talked about that, that they're not really asking for that. Knowing that it's a business, yeah, I don't think that's going to be, I don't think that's something that we really need to be worried about because there's still going to be applying to college.
If we have very impressive students, the colleges find, I mean, homeschool students go to college.
Right.
You develop a portfolio. You, I mean, these methods are out there, you know, other school districts are using them. So, you know, to Damian's point, professional development, exploring what might work for us and in what areas and things like that. But, I mean, I think that the inertia of the educational, you know, establishment, you know, changes slowly. But I definitely think that like this particular change started 10 years ago and, you know, the pandemic has certainly accelerated it. But it's been there and I don't think, I, if you don't know where I stand on this issue, you know, you don't know me. But, you know, I think this is an opportunity to kind of, you know, join that, that movement towards, you know, away from standardizing children, you know, so.
I think one of the things to keep in mind, because I know we've had comments from community members sometime about our ranking as a school district, when the business review comes out. And all of that is based on the kind of testing that we're saying is not important to us. So I just say that because, you know, there's a part of me that believes if you do all this other good stuff, you end up scoring well on standardized tests anyway. But that may not happen. And so I just say that because I know that that is important to some of our community members around property values and, you know, which district do I move into if I'm looking, well, such and such is ranked one and you're only six? What does that mean? And I think it means nothing. But people do look at that.
I mean, I'm very comfortable with looking at evolving away from tests. And I think, you know, where we're, our current, you know, life in the pandemic supports that. But I don't think if we eliminate tests altogether, I think that would make me more uncomfortable. I'm not an educator. But I just think we need to have some sort of assessment. So I think moving towards professional development and identifying alternative models is great. But I think elimination is not what we're agreeing to, is that.
Well, we may not have them anyway for a while, so.
Right.
We don't have the authority over things like Regents exams.
Right. That'll come from the state.
To make that determination and.
Right. You know, I'm not saying we don't have the kids' review for two weeks before the, you know, like, you know, it's really just more about, you know, why are we in class? Is it to score well on the Regents exam at the end of the year? Or do we want to take the time to explore the historical information that doesn't always make it into our textbooks, right? You know, alternative histories. You know, do we want to take the time to explore that and sharpen our kids', you know, research skills and critical thinking skills and things like that? And, you know, is that the focus? Or is the focus making sure we get through all this content by the end of the year so that we get the best scores as possible on the Regents exam? You know, I, I'm not suggesting that we try to get rid of, you know, tests at the end of the year. But, you know, so much has become about the test. And if there was a different way to measure what kids are doing all year long, I think that would benefit everyone, so.
I don't know in the other disciplines, but I know in the social studies, those Regents are changing.
Yeah, they are.
They're definitely changing.
Science is changing too.
Yeah. So I think they're moving in the right direction.
I'm in agreement with all of this. I just, I think Dr. Wiles brought up a good point because in the past, I've gotten emails about, oh, how come, you know, Gilroon is this number in the rankings, et cetera. And my initial thought is like, that doesn't tell you everything. So, I, you know, people do ask that and look at that. So I think it would, you know, it's kind of making a statement, saying that we're looking at alternative assessments and maybe not prioritizing test scores as they have been in the past. The only, the only question I have is, for some of these metrics that we talked about with attendance and engagement, et cetera, would they be broken down by demographics at all? So we can look at that? Okay.
Because that's the ESSA stuff. I mean, we were, that's what got our attention.
Yeah.
Originally. So how, how do you have it worded, Rebecca, right now, the goal? Do we have the words?
So I have for S, I have two. So number one, to increase student achievement and engagement at state and local levels for all student groups. And number two, to initiate conversation and professional development surrounding alternative assessment models. Does that sound? And then for M, and I might have missed one, so please, I have attendance, discipline suspension, higher level classes, truancy, engagement in extracurriculars, and all broken down by demographics.
And college admission.
College admission.
Yeah, and I wrote some notes, too, like absenteeism. We can put it all together and then have everybody look.
Yep.
About the demographics, Damian, they could be broken down by all kinds of demographics, right? So low-income, English as a second language.
I think the achievable piece kind of is with the time bound. I think they're reasonable. It's just a matter of how long, because we don't really know, it's somewhat uncertain how the rest of this year will go and next year. So I just put it for a few years for now. And then relevant, I think we just talked about. So I'm good with this topic unless other people have comments or questions they want to add. All right, so we'll go to the next page.
Blanca?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to say something?
Go ahead, go.
Yep, it's very simple. I agree with Sema. See how easy that was?
That's a good answer.
Finally.
I heard that.
So the next one is, this is definitely more vague, I think, when we talked about it. The topic was focus on the whole child. And I think our discussion was really around mental health support for students. And we looked, we talked about having the health clinic and looking at the number of mental health professionals available, other types of programming that's in the buildings. Like, I know sources of strength is one that's already there, what other ones are available. And is there a way to assess student mental health at large, district-wide?
I just suggest that for, instead of mental health under the S, we just say social emotional health.
Okay.
I just think it encompasses maybe a little bit more of what we're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe promote the social emotional health of our students.
Instead of provide, promote?
Yep.
I agree.
Sema?
Yes.
I don't know where this particularly fits in, but one of the most important things that I've read that a child needs is at least one adult in a building that they feel close to. And I know different districts have tried to achieve that in different ways. But if somehow or other, we could include that in this whole, I think, idea of focus on the whole child, that each child would have a mentor, an adult mentor in the building, that they, you know, are comfortable with, that the mentor gets to know the child, says hello to them in the hallway, feels personally connected.
Yeah, I'm wondering, because I, and I don't remember if it was here or Reddit somewhere, where like, you know, the administrators would put up the students' names and people would look at the wall and kind of pick off the students who they do know and then see what students are left and make sure that they make that connection with the students who are left up on the board. So I don't know if it's, it's probably, something is probably done, I'm assuming.
Done that here.
Like that, yeah. So just to, to do something like that and to make note that. Like that, yeah, so just to, to do something like that and to make note that it's intentional. To have that one adult connection. And I don't know, Dr. Wiles, if you have other ideas for metrics? Because I don't know, well, I know we have counselors, um, and school psychologists. And if I remember correctly, the mental health clinic at Farnsworth was like at capacity.
Yeah.
I have a, I mentioned a few times, uh, climate surveys. Way back when I worked at SED, which is already a long time ago, um, you know, they were working on a, on a climate survey. Um, and we were thinking about, you know, piloting them in the charter schools. Um, you know, uh, federal department of education already has a survey, it's free, it's online. Um, but we were trying to develop our own and I, I think that part of our state ESA plan is, um, you know, one of the data that we track is about kind of the, the, you know, the socio, um, mental health of, of, uh, of students and that this was gonna be a way, the SED was gonna try to measure that. Um, to my, to today, they haven't rolled that out yet, but, um, it doesn't mean that, you know, there, there's not private companies that have these, these surveys. Um, there's one, the name escapes me, that, that focuses on LGBTQ issues. Um, and, uh, and then like I said, the, the federal department of education has a survey, so, um, you know, that might be a way to measure kind of how students are feeling in our schools.
I know we've done that. I mean, we've done it. It's probably been years though. It needs to be done more, more often, but we have done it. And there's a lot to be learned.
Did you want to say something Damian?
Yeah, I mean, that's actually been something that Marie and I have been talking about for the past year and a half or so. And I think we've taken various stabs at it. Um, but we've looked at a number of different instruments. There's one group that we've, uh, engaged with called Hanover Research that has some tools that we've taken a look at. They're costly, I will say that. Um, there are some free ones out there. The US Department of Education has one out there. I think it, it really, uh, you know, it boils down to, I think, what it is that we want to get out of it and how extensive we want it to be, because the US one I know is very lengthy and it's, it's a pretty massive tool, so. Um, and also if we are dependent on something that's free, we're not gonna get the analytics behind it. And that, that's really the important part of it, I think, is you can get the responses, but if you don't have the analytics, you really don't know what those responses are telling you. So, just put that out there.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Okay, I don't know how we could get this information, but I would like to propose that we find a way to see how many students are bullied or how many incidences of bullying are reported. I don't know if we already capture that. But we, we talk at great length about how truancy is an indicator of problems in the home sometimes or, you know, an issue that will impact your grades. But have we considered that truancy can also be directly related to bullying? So I would like to look at absenteeism and, and what I call truancy and tardiness and all those things, because I really feel like they're associated with bullying and that experience is exactly what we're talking about. But again, I don't know what the answer is.
We collect that data annually. Um, so we have to completely submit to State Ed two, two reports. One is around DASSA and then the second is around what's called the violent and disruptive incident report. So all of our data around incidents of bullying, harassment, um, assault, if that comes up. I mean, all the, you know, various things that we would be concerned about gets reported to State Ed every year. Um, I can pull that data for you at any point if you'd like to take.
But I'm wondering if Blanca's more, more interested in the quiet ones that don't, you don't, they don't come to our attention. And only by asking the question anonymously, you might get at.
Yes.
Some of the issues why kids don't come.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you Gloria, yeah. I think that would be helpful if there's a way to have an anonymous, an anonymous opportunity. I'll tell you, as a parent of a child that was bullied once, though the principal was very helpful and did what he could, my wife, my child's life got much harder after making that, um, you know, a public issue or going to the administrator. They were bullied even more for doing so. So if there were the possibility of some sort of anonymous way to collect that data, I think that would tell us a lot.
Ben, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I was just, you know, uh, Damian made the point of, you know, what are we gonna use the data for? And I think Blanca answered it first. I mean, we want schools to be places that kids want to be, you know? Um, that relates back to our first goal about achievement and, and, um, you know, and, and so, you know, uh, like Marie said, we, we've taken some of these steps. Last, last year, we sent out that survey to the middle school and high school, you know, um, I think it was, you know, I feel appreciated when, you know, I feel valued when. And, um, and then of course the high schoolers, all top ten answers were, you know, ironic, you know, sarcastic. And, um, you know, I, I think that that's a, a red flag, you know? Uh, that says a lot and, um, about, you know, what we need to do to make school a place where they can answer that question, uh, you know, genuinely.
I also, and we don't have to do this now because I'm just asking, but programming like, for example, sources of strength, to have like, um, a list and, you know, see what program that we already have and see what else is available that we'd want to maybe look at, but like you said Damian, you know, not having the, not knowing what, you know, what we need first, having a climate survey and maybe having to pay professionals to get analytics to know like, oh, this is an area that we want to focus in. Um, and then thinking about programming, I don't remember what else is, um, what other programming is, is, is happening. I just can't remember, but I know that when we do the budget, these are things that will come up. And, um, it's easy to align when we're saying that this is aligned with this goal of social emotional health.
We want to, the, the heading we have is focus on the whole child. Do we want to change that? Or do we want to keep it like that to focus on the social emotional health?
Yeah, so I wrote for the specific goal to promote the social emotional health, um, that are needed for all of our students. Um, that, the thing at the top was really just like the topics that we talked about.
Right.
So I won't put it in.
So we don't need those in, okay.
Yeah. Unless you want me to.
No, the goal should, the statement should speak for itself, the goal.
Now Seema, are you adding either anything about bullying or about that each child would have at least one adult mentor under the goals?
So under, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how that would be. So I wrote adult connection with each child. And I'm wondering like, is, is that a reasonable metric? Or would it be under programming in terms of trying to reach all children? Because the way you were talking about it, Barb made it almost seem like, like an advi- like a advocate. Like every student has some kind of, like advocate in the building.
An adult connection, be it their, their bus driver or, you know, the janitor, administrator, head of a department. It's, and all the workshops that I've gone to over the years, that seems to be the, the best thing that a school district can have going for it. That each kid has someone that they feel very comfortable with. And, um, to me, that sort of fits under this whole child and social emotional. And I think Blanca's idea of, you know, reemphasizing the anti-bullying policies that we have and, you know, are, are they being followed? Um, the Vader report, I think, just basically gives us a feel for some really bad incidences of knives or guns or physical altercations. But the, the original bullying task force I know asked for numbers of cases that were reported. They may be minor, they may be major, but I, I don't think we've ever, over the years, gotten that kind of information. In other words, somebody reports to the principal that my child has been bullied and where does it go?
That's really the DASSA data. We get that every year as well.
Yeah.
So we have on, you know, on the website, there's a DASSA reporting form that's available to anyone to submit. So all of those are captured in the data that we collect and then responded to. We have to respond to those within forty-eight hours, so we have all that information as well.
But if, if somehow or other we could sort of compare school A with school B with school C, are there differences because of population, poverty, uh, education of the parents or whatever? Um, my recollection of the Vader reports is that we had very few incidences and we know that isn't the case in real life. That, you know, when they've done the national surveys, when you served on that original task force and we got that stuff, good twenty-five percent of your kids reported that they had been bullied in school. And then we went through about a two or three year period where there was a real emphasis in the district, um, you know, trying to capture this and prevent this from happening. And then over the years, other things have sort of risen to the top and we're not emphasizing it as much. And I, I think what Blanca might be asking is, you know, is there more that we could do? Have we crested or is it still going on? Uh, my feeling is it probably is still going on because kids are kids, you know, and they, they have to learn. But I don't know if, if that would be like a subtopic or, I think it's important is what, I guess I'm trying to say, that it's somehow or other, it should get into this focus on the whole child because that has such an impact on, on a kid. That's remembered for a lifetime. It, it doesn't just happen and go away. Um, kids will remember it until their dying day. So I don't know where you want to fit it in, but I just think it belongs there somewhere.
Under M, under that column M for metrics, you know, it refers to programming and such things as, you know, bullying is listed specifically. It might be other things we want to put. But it definitely is there. That's something we want to look at in terms of what's happening, you know, to met, to, to get the metrics. You know, how widespread is it? What are the issues? Uh, where are the issues and then what's being done to address them? So I, I think that it's there.
But what I'm saying, should it be under S as well as the first thing, closing the achievement gap? We had sort of two things under S, to increase student achievement, dah dah, and then, uh, alternative assessments.
But that, I think that bullying fits under social emotional health.
Okay.
I, I do, but if you see it differently.
You know, I think this points to, um, the need to do a quality survey where we can ask questions about, have you been bullied? Have you witnessed bullied?
Yeah.
Bullying? Do you have a connection with a particular grownup in your building? You know, is it a, a teacher or the bus, whatever it is? I, you know, so I think we should maybe go back because.
I agree.
Yeah.
I think that would give us the data we would need to know, so then what do we need to do to fix it? Because now we're, we're kind of getting solutions ahead of problems.
Right. Find out where the problem is.
So I mean, a, a goal could be to, um, to promote blah, 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 et cetera, like we wrote. And the metric would be to look into and to start creating this climate survey and be inclusive of, talking about what Barb mentioned with adult connection, bullying, whatever else that we just talked about. And it sounds like you guys were already thinking about this.
Yeah, I think, let's go back and look at the free one and see what the back of that is in terms of the analytics. But, you know, maybe we want to go back and talk with our friends at Hanover again. Maybe there's a pandemic, um, reduction sale.
Discount.
Well, I know a lot of these vendors are hurting.
Yeah, true.
Um, you know, people aren't doing that kind of research because they were just trying to open. So my, my inbox is full of vendors wanting my attention. So maybe there's some opportunity there because it would help us get that bigger picture across the district of how are our kids feeling about being in school?
I mean, we, you might want to reach out to State Ed too.
Yeah.
They have one. It's, you know, I saw it once upon a time, but.
Just getting the metrics from it. Once you give it, will, will they help with that?
Right, but I mean, hopefully they would have a, a formula to, you know.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking like they might have a resource, they're not ready to roll out, especially.
Maybe we could pilot it.
Given all the pandemic stuff, um, that, you know, maybe we can say, hey, do you mind if we pilot this? Or, you know, something, something like that. Um, meanwhile, we're using the data for our own selfish, greedy reasons, so.
Yeah, I think having that one metric of, um, having the survey would be reasonable too. I mean, it would take probably a couple of years to like gather whatever and, because I know that's obviously the safety and the staying open is the priority.
Yeah, we should put that as goal number one. Stay open till June twenty, whatever.
And then I didn't write this Barb, but I'm gonna assume that, you know, when things get back to normal, another metric could be to look at school start time or keep that in mind or something.
Okay.
Well, I just.
And social emotional health.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that start time and then, uh, you know, a trusted adult, you know, those are strategies to achieve this goal.
Right.
You know, I don't know that they're necessarily a goal or, or a measurement. Uh, you know, I think that, that they're effective strategies that, that will help us achieve our goal uh, once we kind of, you know, uh, establish a baseline from which we can improve from, so.
Yeah, and not a separate goal, but right, to be another metric to, that we're looking at that. That it's not something that, especially after having done so much work before for it, that it's not that, we're not gonna look at that anymore.
I think another metric that kind of falls under social emotional health is substance abuse, particularly, you know, in adolescence. And that's something immeasurable, right? Like it's a, a objective thing that we can measure. Um, kids are suspended for substance abuse, right? So that would be in the suspension data?
Yep.
So again, it's just sort of an easy thing to measure. Um, and we could look at that in terms of risk factors.
I think we actually, the county does a, um, I can't remember what they call it, but like a risky behavior survey and we participate when asked and it seems to me we've done that, maybe in the last year or two. Um, I'll ask Mike Piscatelli because we would administer it to high school students and it asks those kinds of questions.
Great.
It sounds like the second page is, is pretty much agreed upon unless other people have other ideas or questions. Okay. So go to the third page. This is the diversity work that we talked about. So I put, um, two goals here. One of, the first one was one that we've already talked about was to create a committee, a standing committee with three or four board members and asking, um, for letters of interest from the community. I like Ben, Ben's idea of maybe capping it at, at ten at the most. Um, it's hard to get that number where you're inclusive of people, but actually trying to do, accomplish something, there's too many. Um, and each year, you know, if there's more interest, we can rotate and let other people, um, participate. And a measurable way, a me- some, a way to measure it, is it created? Or do we have the individuals that we need on the committee? I know we've gotten emails before of people who are already interested, um, community members. I had a teacher email me, um, and I think that's reasonable, relevant, achievable. You guys think?
I think ten is too small a number, but, uh, only just because if we take up three or four spots and we've got community members, parents, um, staff, administrator. I mean, we're gonna have people that want to be part of this, so. And I think our other committee that we're, when the facilities committee.
Safety?
That's usually got, what, fifteen to twenty? Neil? Our facilities committee, what does that usually have?
Um, we're in the, probably in the fifteen range.
But I, I think we need to have a larger group than ten, just to.
So, um, if I can just flesh out my idea, um, for those of you who didn't see it in the doc. Um, you know, the, the thought was that, um, you know, equity, anti-race, you know, those are just so big that I, I don't know how we create an effective charge to a, a large group for that. And so my thought was, was, um, you know, form a standing board committee, uh, equity committee, whatever you want to call it. Um, you know, they can develop their own charter, uh, you know, and in that kind of determine what their membership will be. Ten, you know, um, invite administrators, students, uh, community members. And then each year, the committee will pick areas to look at. Uh, the hi- you know, the history curriculum, the code of conduct, professional development, um, kind of like how the audit committee chooses different special areas to inspect each year. And then the committee can call a task force. And then the committee can call a task force for that issue and invite, you know, the community in to discuss, you know, you know, code of conduct, you know, you know, dress code, whatever it might be that they want to focus on. You know, and then the task force would make findings, recommend it to the committee, and then the committee would bring it to the board. You know, my concern, you know, was just that if you just threw 100 people in a room and said, you know, the goal is to create more equity in the schools, there would be 100 different ideas and we just need a way to focus that, you know, not because we want to go slowly, but just because the only way is manageable, was my thought.
Yeah, and I was in agreement to have the standing committee and not a task force, but the task force be a subgroup of that because that's really finite and it's for a specific issue. And like you said, Ben, like it could be different every year. And I know there's work already being done at the district. And so this could be something that's parallel and also allows people from the community to participate. So if they have ideas, you know, that they want to share, this is a medium to, you know, to communicate with the district as well. I mean, you know, like you said, Ben, we could have, they could put together their, their charge of their group or their charter of their group. And I don't know, maybe the number thing is we have a range and we don't really know until we have letters of interest.
Put it together, yeah.
But I think we should have it be a standing committee, but I know that's a time commitment. So it's a commitment in general.
I think it should be a committee too. I think it keeps it fresh.
I like Ben's idea. That was a good way to approach it, to have the committee and pick topic or topics.
Right, you know, a couple of years, task force develops, we deal with the issue, you know, to some satisfaction. And then the next year, the new committee, you know, the, you know, at the reorganizational meeting, it's a standing committee, we appoint new members. And they say, okay, you know, what haven't we looked at? What haven't we looked at in a while? You know, if this is in the future? And, you know, continue to, you know, review different areas of this school. And then invite community participation on that issue, which I think will just be more productive than, than like a general charge to the community.
Yeah, and if it makes sense, I remember, I know Damian and Marie were there. I don't remember who else, but in the fall, that group met with us and they wanted to look at the social studies curriculum and see what other things they could add. That would be a way instead of, you know, they could bring that to the group and the group would decide, you know, is this something that they want to focus on this year or maybe look at next year? And obviously, whoever's involved in that in the school district would be involved too, so.
Would we be looking at the standing committee similar to like the audit committee, which has community involvement?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And.
We look at it like that.
Yeah.
Right. If 10 people is too little, the committee can come here and say, all right, well, we're going to change our charter a little bit and add a couple, you know, we realize we didn't have representation from this community, we'd like to add it. And we just changed the charter of the committee. Or if, you know, they have 15 people and it's too much, they come to us and they say, it's unwieldy, you know, and it just allows that kind of flexibility while keeping it core and right in front of us, you know, the whole time, you know, every meeting, so.
Yeah, and I.
I like the idea of keeping it as, seeing it as a standing committee that takes on issues one by one as it needs to, as it determines or the board directs.
I think that we should also give opportunity of a student or a couple of students that want to be involved in this, because I don't think the rest of our committees have any students. But I mean, this one, I think, really would be relevant and important to have students. And I imagine that there's probably some students interested.
Am I imagining it? Are we hiring an equity officer? We all, are we, was that in the budget?
No.
Was it a different, it may have been a different organization, okay. No, nevermind.
I think we talked about that one meeting.
Well, somebody took on some of the roles. An existing staff member has taken on, or administrator, I believe. I'm not sure.
I think that was data privacy. No.
Yeah, that was the data privacy more so. We added it around. I will say openly, I still think it's a critical, critical position.
It's going to have to be.
Well, if we ever hire equity officers, then they should be on that committee.
Committee.
Yeah. I think I meant, I think we did talk about it in one of our remote meetings because I said, you know, that's fine, but that's not the only solution because that's where like diversity goes to dive. With one person, it becomes a silo. But maybe this is where that committee could start, you know, the work or looking into how that piece would fit in with the rest of the work being done.
Yeah, it's just somebody that's more trained at.
Focused on that.
Focused on, and has, I'm assuming has a little bit different training on equity other than reading a couple of books that I've read, you know, or, you know, most people have taken it.
I think it's also, it depends on how you define the position too. But I think, number one, I think we shouldn't use the word officer.
No.
We need a different title for that. It can't be an equity officer.
No.
So I think, you know, part of it, at least in my mind, is that this is a position which circles back to the first goal as not just someone who's looking at data and that kind of stuff, but also is there as an advocate for students. You know, it goes back to Barbara's point. It's just another person that's, you know, not an administrator who would be doling out discipline, but it's someone who's a safe person for, you know, students of color to go to or students who are feeling in some way marginalized, they have a place where they can go and get the support they need and the advocacy they need. So I think, you know, we have to define it to be what we want it to be, but I think it circles right back to the first goal to.
You know, I think one of the pieces that might be missing in this conversation is that I, there are all kinds of elements of this work happening throughout the district. So Reagan and I are talking about hiring practices and, you know, building a pipeline. And Damian's working with the curriculum cabinets and looking at all kinds of content area. Amy Heralcheck is leading a group at the high school to talk about how we become an anti-racist building. You know, there's, there's pockets of things all over the place. But I hate to even say these two words back to back, but I feel like we almost need a master plan of what it is we're trying to do. I didn't say strategic, because I can't clearly. But, and I kind of envisioned the board committee or whatever this committee was going to be, would be the group that wouldn't necessarily do the work, but the group to frame the work.
Yeah.
Right.
So here's, we want to be, we want to be more equitable. We want to be anti-racist, whatever the phrase is. So we have work to do on curriculum, policy, hiring, discipline, you know, and there's probably a couple of other categories too. And then that committee can delegate, okay? So, you know, HR is going to work on how this plays out in our hiring processes. So, you know, it's kind of that idea because right now, we don't have a coherent plan. And I, and I think our community hears us talking about a little bit of this, a little bit of that. But I would love for them to go to our website and click on something and see, here's, here's the plan. It's going to be life's work, but here's the plan. Here are the categories of things that we really care about and how we're going to do that work over time. And some things might need a task force because, you know, it's like, no one group in the context of their normal, everyday work can get this done, kind of like school start time. We couldn't just say to five people, go figure this out. Although that's exactly what we did to open school, but that's another story. But, you know, there probably are parts of this work where we need a task force to say, we're just going to dig in and figure this out. And other things that are going to be and need to be more organic to how we think about curriculum, how we think about hiring, how we think about professional development, et cetera. So that's, that's kind of where I'm thinking about the board role in this.
I think that's a great idea, Dr. Wells, because I know we talked about the hiring piece before and there was, you know, articles written about trying to recruit, you know, teachers of color, et cetera. But that's, that's all stuff that, that's not technically our job and we say that is important, but it's too big of a, it's too big a work for us to really focus on. But to have a standing committee that looks and kind of is all encompassing of that. And I don't know, do we need to vote to have a standing committee? I don't remember.
I think we, and I think we should do it right away. I mean, I think we should flush the wording out and then at the next meeting, form the standing committee, get the letters out of interest.
Then our goal would be done.
Well, at least get the, yeah, the committee started because there are people in our community who have indicated an interest. They're waiting and we've been putting it off a little because we've been overwhelmed right now with the start, the start of school reopening. But I think October 6th, we can form the committee and then put out the letter. And we've done this before, so we have some models. Get the letter out. We already have some people that are interested and start putting the group together and let them get working.
As I say, I think that's a great idea to do that. Having the committee as a board committee to be like the central repository for all of the information that's going on during our committee briefs, that's a great opportunity to get, be like, Amy's doing this and this person's doing this and this person's doing that. We could just have a monthly report of what's already happening that might ease people's, you know, thoughts that nothing's happening because we know so much it is. It's just a great, instead of going to a webpage, just go through, find all the stuff, be like, hey, I talked with, you know, XYZ and this was their initiative for the month and this is what happened. And it'd be like a student report that you hear. That's a great opportunity to just collect the information.
Yeah, that's a great point, Kelly, because the work is already being done.
Yes.
To be highlighted for people.
Highlighted, to highlight, it was like a group to highlight what's already being done in an organized way and maybe provide some more direction or, you know, this person's already working on this, maybe you two should work together or something like that.
Barb, did you have your question?
I just wanted to jump onto Gloria's idea of increasing the 10. If we already have four board members that only leave six, and if you want students, administrators, even on the steering committee, I think I'd expand it a little bit and not just leave it to that, that 10-person body, but bounce it up to 12 to 15. Then your task force could even be bigger because your task force is going to be broken up into, maybe you're going to do this segment of it, this and you're going to do this segment. But I'm just a little uncomfortable with the 10.
I'm not saying 10 is a magic number. What I'm trying to say is that, you know, it should be smaller than everybody who wants to participate because we'll have hundreds of people there. So, you know, I think there's no magic number. And my point with this structure is that, you know, someone quips, you know, the goal would be done. Well, no, the committee would form different goals, you know? The committee would form the SMART goals for each particular issue that it's facing. And similarly, you know, I don't know what the right, you know, I don't know what the right composition of that committee is, which is why we'd like to leave it to the committee, you know, to come back and tell us, this isn't working, we're missing this representation. You know, by all means, send out the letters, but, but, you know, once we have them, we have to kind of, you know, I don't know that like from nothing, we can come up with the right formula of how many people should be on this committee. So, and that's kind of why I want to, you know, instead of one massive SMARQ that may or, you know, it's going to be hit or miss, I'd like to create a committee that can work on this, bring in the people who need to be brought in, connect with the community members that, you know, the community resources that need to be connected with, and call task force when appropriate. And to, you know, review the work that the district's doing, just like many of our committees do, you know? If our committees didn't exist, Maria and Neil and Damian would keep running the school, you know? A lot of times, these committees are feedback and discussion and it's a way to get all the minds in one room so that we can kind of say, all right, we are going in the right direction or not, so.
Yeah, Barbara, I'm taking the 10 out of that words written right now. And I'm in agreement too that we won't really know the number until the group is put together and let them decide. But then I don't think the number should be something that limits us. I'll take that out.
Kind of depends on the charge. Are we going to be a central strategic planning group? That would be a smaller group. Or are we going to be a task force?
I think we go back to what Marie said, talking about a group of people that are going to design a master plan and then decide where task force needs to go or not. But that, that's going to attract different people, I think. You know, if you said, oh, we're going to look at curriculum and this group's going to do that, you might get different people. But if we put out that the task is to form a group, a group that would design a master plan for dealing with equity and diversity issues, that's going to attract certain people.
Not even a plan, you know, as in it's final, but just something, someone who can say, all right, instead of focusing on all 100 issues this year and getting nowhere on all of them, you know, let's focus our efforts on these three. And.
Coordinating group.
Coordinate, and, yeah, right.
Yeah, and that happens, right? Like in other groups, like for policy, for example, right? There's certain things that will be focused on because of whatever's happening that year. Or sometimes sudden things like happen suddenly, like naming of the field. So then we have to like look at policies or whatever. So it would be similar. Not everything at once. I kind of think that incorporates the next goal that were, they were written separately. The district will support collaborative partnerships, the foster learning. I mean, that would, could be combined with the goal above. And obviously, this committee, that would probably be part of their charge.
It would probably set that as one of their goals.
Yeah, or something like that, similar to that.
Yeah, I just think that's the first step because it's so big an issue, you know? Like we could sit here and come up with 50 SMARQs around equity and inclusion and diversity. And it's overwhelming. And to just make it manageable, not to control the process, not to steer the, you know, not even really to steer the ship, but just to say, all right, well, we can't do everything. This year we'll do X and figure out the best way to do X. And, and then, and then, you know, not to do all the work, you know, not, not the committee to do the work, but the, you know, say to Marie, all right, well, this, you know, your staff should focus on X, or we need a task force for Y. And it, you know, keeps it flexible, alive, evolving as, you know, like Seema said, things come up, you know? It'd be great to have a standing board committee that we say, hey, can you take a look at this and figure out how we should approach it, you know?
We may get data from, if we do some sort of a climate survey or something, that impacts, that group of people thinks about things.
Yeah, and I honestly think like just forming this group, putting it together by the end of the year is reasonable. And it seems like it's, this has been like a long time coming. Like we've been talking about this over and over. People have reached out and, you know, now we have the time to do it. So I can draft something together.
We can vote for the October 6th meeting.
But I'll send it out before so you can, you know, wordsmith whatever you want. And we'll combine these two, I think. Other questions or comments about this one? Okay, we'll go to the last page. Which is facilities. We had two things that we talked about, ensure a safe and secure environment for all individuals in the district, and then to develop a more future-ready classroom and school building plan slash capital project plan. I think the two discussions that we're having about facilities is obviously to fix things and to keep things safe and secure, but then also to look ahead and, you know, have a plan as to what we want the district to look like, facilities-wise.
Yeah, that's definitely two different. I mean, that's two totally different focuses because we do have a district-wide facilities committee that really does five. And there are board members on it, parents on it, administrators on it, students on it. And that's done, you meet what, you form every year or?
No, it's really more capital projects.
Capital projects, yeah. But that second one is what we're, I don't think we, that committee would be dealing with. That's something.
Should we take out five then? Because it's already.
Yeah, I think five is really something we have.
You have to do. But the other thing, I did not write here, but we did talk about was the technology piece, was, I think it was about cybersecurity and just technology and security in general. And I don't think we had anything specific as, except that that's what we need to look at. And I remember having a little bit of a discussion about it. And I remember having a little bit of a discussion about it. I don't know if you guys have ideas for that. I mean, I can put this separately. Or would that be part of developing a more future-ready?
I mean, the future's now. I mean, every, half of the schools, 25, 20 schools.
And cybersecurity.
The future is now.
I, I think if Damian is not saying this, but I think he would say that we have to be, um, willing to invest more in our technology immediately. We, we're very conservative with how much we spend each year, even though it's a lot. But our use of technology obviously is just off the charts right now. And the need to replace devices and maintain our infrastructure, um, is a heavy lift. I mean, I'm saying that now, I guess it's a foreshadow to the budget and a year that's going to be tough, but.
Well, it's, it's also a timing thing right now too, because we really have no other available funding streams to support technology. So smart schools.
Done.
Bye-bye, that's pretty much done. So, you know, what we did typically prior to things like smart schools was we always wove it into capital projects, at least the significant infrastructure upgrades and those kinds of things. So I think we, going forward, we have to be really strategic about, you know, are we, I mean, the cybersecurity thing, I can't understate that. I mean, it, it, right now, if there's ever a time when the world is ripe for hackers and, you know, all kinds of things going on, it is now, uh, and we're already seeing it, you know, across the country. There have been districts that have been shut down because of ransomware. We haven't been hit, knock on something, but, um, many districts have. And we would be, I think, very much regretting not recognizing that and responding to that because it's a very real thing. But then, you know, there's the classroom component too and, and what we're doing there. And, you know, I think that's also a very important thing. So basically, I want it all, but, you know.
Do you see that fitting under something like a goal six? That future, being future ready?
Yeah, I mean, I think just going back to the last capital project. And similar to the conversation we just had, and we essentially put together a task force to look at a future-ready classroom and start to develop what the critical components of what that would be. Unfortunately, that got pulled from the original draft of the capital project. But, you know, the exercise of that work and the conversations around that work was definitely happening. You know, we probably could have been a little bit more aggressive in maybe the promotion of it and the communication around it, but.
Now, was that, Damian, was that a separate group that met or did it?
Yeah, that was a group that I led. It was kind of a sub-
Subcommittee. I was wondering if the subcommittee of facilities.
Facilities committee. So like, you know, I pulled together a bunch of teachers and, you know, we had a, a group that worked on the side and then presented back to the facilities committee and put together a plan of, you know, the critical components that we wanted to see in our classrooms, which included technology and, you know, some furniture, different types of furniture, not the traditional types of furniture, but, um, yeah.
Does that fall under the reimbursement piece of the, because the capital projects are reimbursed at a certain amount, right? Like sixty percent?
There's aid behind it, yeah.
Great, so is technology? Say, say we decide, just, say we decided next year we need to do a tech, a, a capital project because we need, we are not even close to be future-ready or now-ready. Say we have to, I don't know, $20 million. Is that, is that reimbursable?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's what's called adable hardware. So that's basically what we budget annually in our budget is the adable hardware line. And that's where we, you know, we get most of our replacement devices and things that are really for classroom instruction. Like Maria said, we've always been very, very conservative with that line. I mean, we are probably at the low end of comparable-sized schools and what we budget for that. And we've been able to make do because there have been some other funding streams available. But it's going to be harder going forward for us to be able to, to do that. But you do get aid back on that as well as instructional software, adable software. And those are the two pockets, they're, they're not large pockets though of money. So really, when we're talking about cap, these types of things, we are more along the lines of a capital project where we are able to recoup also state aid as, as part of that. It's hard to do with those smaller, it's a per pupil allocation, basically. And we do get maxed out on, on that on an annual basis.
But this, any goals we set in here, we're really going to have to work through our facilities and off there as we, we have a facilities committee this year, we won't have a?
We don't have a standing committee or, or plan to go forward with any capital project.
We are?
We do not.
No, we do not. But if we're putting this as a goal, we're going to have to have.
So I was just going to ask, the technology piece, that's infrastructure, supporting technology, including cybersecurity, would that be as a metric for this future-ready piece or is this a separate? Because we're, we, you know, last time we were talking about buildings and visiting the other school, it was at Queensberry and see what they look like. I mean, it could be all together. I'm just thinking is?
I would, I would separate the cybersecurity and infrastructure work from the idea of a future-ready classroom. I mean, I think, you know, the infrastructure and the cybersecurity are kind of the bones behind it. But the vision of the classroom, I think, is a totally separate conversation. And I think that's the conversation that's going to, to some degree, guide what we need to do for infrastructure. So if it's something where we need to have, you know, greater bandwidth or we need to have, uh, you know, different types of connections in our classrooms, then that's kind of informed by the vision of what we want to do in our classrooms.
You said you've, you've had these kinds of discussions with the group you set up. Do you feel that that just, obviously we didn't get enough support behind it, but how would we proceed if we wanted to move forward on that? Would we get that conversation going again?
Yeah, I think we'd need to get the conversation going again. You know, there are new things all the time that we're.
Would we do it through which groups, cabinets? Would we do it through?
Well, I think that's probably a, a facility. So when we get to a point of thinking about another capital project, I think that's likely the time when we'd have to think about that because that's not something that we would feasibly be able to pull off as part of the general budget.
Right.
But the visioning piece, I think, isn't important to start looking now at, you know, what are we preparing for and what's the potential? What would we want to create when we have the opportunity? And there's a lot of legwork that goes into.
Yeah, I would think you want a vision first and then, okay, let's, now it's time to move on it, but.
And to sell it. And to sell the, to the community.
Exactly. Exactly.
That's, that's where we fell short last time.
I would agree, I think they need to get.
I'm wondering if this year needs to be that kind of a year to finding the vision, doing those visits. If we can this year, maybe over the next two years, I don't know what we're going to be able to get done with the pandemic going on. But getting out to schools, talking, seeing.
Yeah.
Creating the vision of what we see it being looked like. And then if we're ready to move, we can, maybe the year after.
This might be exactly the year to start talking about, like, the funding of a, of a cybersecurity. Initiative, it's, it's right on people's minds. I mean, every single day.
We've been able to do some things this year already. We've implemented some new systems around cybersecurity, which, um, you know, are, are definitely helpful. But I think it's one of those, those areas that you're constantly, because there are constantly new threats and attacks and things. It's just a constant.
I feel like it's easier, at least for people that have children in school or work within the schools, it seems like a, a no-brainer, like they're going to vote for it because they, they're feeling the pain every single day. And they know the risks involved in the cyber firsthand.
Just trying to, you know, the, the other bit of the other stakeholders of. Okay, I know you said, Neil, that we put the facilities committee when we're ready to do a capital project. So what would we do now as we're thinking the pre-facilities committee, the earlier? What would we need to put together?
Like a vision?
I think.
And we can always reconvene the group that worked for the last capital project and start looking at some next things. I think, you know, it, I, I think there's an overarching question that's immediately going to come up. And that's what is school going to look like in general?
Yeah.
And, um, you know, so I think the conversation is inevitably going to be different than what we had a year and a half ago, two years ago, whatever it was, uh, because there are so many other things about just what is school right now? So, but we can, you know, we can certainly re-engage those folks and.
Can you re-engage, can you bring other people in?
Yeah.
I think, I think that would be a great idea.
Barb, did you have something?
Yeah, I just have a question. Could we not have as sort of a goal, um, a report from your committee? You know, as to what they thought at that time was a future-ready classroom?
We did, we did one already. I mean, we can bring it back out, but we did a report on it.
You did it on, in the context of the building project. But I'm saying just as a refresher for if this is a goal, you know, maybe that could be one of the things that could be done.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it sounds like it started before and then we obviously had to stop. So a goal could be to develop a future-ready vision or vision, however you want to call it for facilities.
It may be modified, I mean, people have been think, are going to be thinking differently now.
Exactly, exactly.
But I think maybe by the spring, if some thinking goes on, we could get a picture. I mean, I'm sure the picture's going to change as we move forward, but.
So I know that, um, Seema mentioned Queensberry, who were able to pass a huge capital project. They began with a large group of people talking about what they hope for, for their school district in the future. So I, I, I think that's wise because ultimately we need to have a lot of people say, okay, we're willing to support a capital project. And we're several years out from a capital project. I mean, we, we still have two more years of the one that we're in. So I don't know how soon after we close the books and the one we're in the middle of, we want to go to our community to say, are you willing to support a large expenditure?
Well, it might be ready in a couple of years, but we need to do the thinking and get people's excited about it.
Yes, and Queensberry spent about three years.
Yeah, I could see that.
In the preliminary, so it's.
So the metric could just be setting up the framework as to how, you know, it's three years, however, you know, long it takes to come up with it, get everybody involved and sell it, so, just the start of it. Because really it sounded like it was, there was already a start, I don't know, sometime last year? Well, I don't remember, whenever the last capital project happened or the first time it got voted down. I, I, I don't remember who was in that group.
It was fall of 2018.
Okay.
So it's, it seems like 10 years ago now. Different world.
It does.
I think that's a good goal then. The future-ready is going to mean different things. Do we need to have a certain, a specific cyber goal in here or do you think it could encompass into future-ready? Maybe with the focus of cyber or?
Well, I think that's why I was asking Damian that we would have it separate. But I'm thinking, you know, how we'd phrase that and it would be, you know, something like to maintain infrastructure and support technology, including cybersecurity. But the metrics piece is something I would, you know, need, I'm sure that would really be coming from you, Damian, and whoever else in the district that knows what kind of metrics, bandwidth, et cetera. Types of security.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Yeah.
Hi, I was wondering if maybe we could broaden it to say something like, uh, focus on improving the physical and virtual learning environment? Because it sort of leaves it open because like Damian said, we don't know what a learning environment's going to look like after this pandemic and they change drastically. And just a sort of side note, I'm concerned about a capital project. I feel like it's going to be a hard sell. I'm going to put that out there.
We're talking three, three years out at least. So it would be developing the framework to even get together people to think about it, about it. Because you have to think about it, you have to have a plan, a vision, right?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, with the pandemic and having people remote, like, I, I feel like naturally it would be the time to talk about what is needed, right? Facilities-wise and technology-wise. Barb, did you have your hand?
I, I think those two words capture what we've been talking about and trying to do, the physical and virtual environment. I think it captures it beautifully. Good job.
So what's the measure, so would the measurable bit of it would just be? Form the committee or like, well, again, it's another thing where we need to have a committee to know what the, what the M.
I mean, I think, I think the N, whether we've achieved it or not, will be represented if our capital project passes at the ultimate. You know, if it passes, then we achieved our goal, you know? I don't know that, I don't know that there's, we could have many, you know, first we have the plan, then we have the selling of it, you know, you know? And, and, uh, you know, there's certainly thing, steps to take along the way. You know, maybe it's not so much a measure as in a number that goes up or down as in, as a checklist of, have we made the progress that we think we need to make to, to get to this point of passing the capital project?
Right, because the goal would be several years. But we would see, you know, what are we in now, September? In January and then maybe the end of the year, have we made progress? So we look back at our goals, you know, did a committee meet yet to start talking about this? You know, do we have specific metrics for technology, you know, that we're going to look at, et cetera?
So the timeline, the T would be more 23 to 25 or, right?
Yeah, I think it would be later.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, 2025. Probably for both.
Yeah.
But you know, if we didn't have these, I think it would be more of a problem. I mean, these are issues that we're going to have to deal with anyways. We're going to have to still do a budget regardless every year. At least we have like working goals that we're looking forward to and it makes sense. This is supposed to, you know, spending money on random things that come up.
And I think that's what, that was missing last time with our capital project was, you know, um, you know, through, through no fault of, of the district, but, you know, it got, it got present, it got talked about in the community as, oh, they want flexible seating, you know, and, and, uh, and somehow that cost $10 million, you know? And, and, uh, I'm not, I'm not for flexible seating, you know? You know, that's not the vision, right? I mean, that was a step towards the vision. But because we didn't really have a full vision yet, it was so easy to focus on the, the little pieces that, you know, looked absurd, you know, uh, in, in the context of a 40-plus million-dollar capital project. You know, whereas if we, if we have a vision, you know, um, you know, this is what our schools will look like. And, you know, to, 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 you know, Seema's point, the world's different, you know? Last time, that didn't, you know, that, that part of our capital project didn't pass. You know, I, I share Blanca's concerns about, you know, the, how much the community's willing to bear. But I think it's much easier to sell a why than it is to sell a what. And, um, and if we have a vision and we're selling the vision, the, the capital project follows from that and, and, and people get why there's flexible seating, you know? They get the why of it instead of just, this is part of the capital project, so.
The shared vision piece. Yeah, critical. And Blanca's waving.
Oh.
Her friend.
We must really want to get attention.
We see you.
Going to make sure you saw me. To Seema's point, I think you're right. This pandemic may present itself with an opportunity to sell the capital project. And I can't find a different way to phrase it. To me, one of the biggest concerns of the last capital project was the sentiment that perhaps the stuff that we were being asked to pay for as taxpayers were things we would have expected to have been covered along the way. And so, um, you know, I'm not trying to offend anybody, but that's, that's the kind of vibe that I got and heard from other people. So that's totally different though, because who was going to expect that we were going to have a pandemic and that we would need to change everything? So maybe, um, Seema is correct and this could be a whole different thing.
Yeah, and I agree, Ben, have the vision to go along with this is probably a big piece that was missing or got misconstrued last time. Gloria, were you going to say something? Sorry?
No, I was just thinking, I'm trying to think of in terms of, um, timing and things like that. I mean, we, we really have to start with what that vision is so that, as we're talking about it and developing it or as, as the committee does, that the public is brought in on the conversation. So I think as many people as possible hearing that and talking about it so that it becomes a shared vision. So that we all see it. And then the question, how do you get about, how do you get it? But what is it going to look like or why is it going to look differently than it does today?
Kind of to, kind of along the lines of Blanca's point, I think, before I was on the board, I had no idea how budgets worked in the town, like 2%. Like, two percent tax cap, yeah, but there, there's just no way to do these improvements in a budget. Yeah, it's a hundred million dollars, but it's, it's down to like the gnats, you know what, and of, you know, I need a new chair. You can't, you can't get a new chair. There's no, there really isn't, it's just not, it's really like it's not built to do any kind of anything. You have to have these capital projects if you want to, you know, not have, you know?
Grow the school, yeah.
You know, the ceilings fall in on you. So it's like an education piece, it seems as well. I certainly didn't know anything about it, how that works, so I'm learning, I'm continuing to learn about it. There's just no room for anything extra in the budget, especially with a two percent tax cap that doesn't even account for inflation. So in, in salaries and things like that, so it's challenging.
Gloria, can you remind me, because December 2000, or fall of 2018 does seem like 10 years ago?
No.
Like, who was the group that was meeting? I may have been meeting, I don't remember. I remember.
Meeting on the?
For, talking about the, the capital project back then. Was it, or was it with facilities?
Yeah, it wasn't a board group, but it was, I think Judy was on the facilities committee.
Yeah, Judy was our representative on the facilities group for us.
Okay.
I'm trying to think of, uh, how do we, for this year, what can we accomplish this year? Do we have to, can we break it down a little so that we don't get to June and say, oh, we didn't do anything on this? Um, you know, how can we, you know, Damian's offered to get, start pulling that group together sometime this year, maybe, and start the conversation again or seeing what that looks like now. Uh, and maybe we can use that as a, a way of having maybe a, a, a district-wide, you know, a community, even, well, when we can meet, a district, well, we could, I guess we could do it virtually too, but to share some of these ideas over the course of the year so that people begin to think, you know, differently. Because everybody, you know, only has what they went through in school as their frame of reference on, or, or maybe their kids. So to see, to be pushed beyond your boundaries and see things.
They just, the only word of caution I'll put out there though is right now, people are.
Yeah.
Up to here.
Yeah, and I'm not saying tomorrow.
I know, I know.
I don't know what it's going to be like.
I think you, you just have to give us a little bit of room to.
Oh, absolutely.
Read the room because, you know, we have people who are.
Right. But even if some have had during the year, maybe next spring, we get some conversations going.
Yeah, I mean, I think timing is everything.
You know, what have we learned from where we've been at? And what, what can that learning inform?
Right.
As we move forward? Maybe that's the start of a conversation.
Timing is really important right now.
Maybe a thought exchange down the road a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, not intrusive, not a meeting, anonymous.
Mm-hmm. What does future-ready mean to you or?
Yeah, something like that.
I mean, the future for people right now is what am I doing tomorrow?
Oh, my God, I know.
It's not, people are not looking five years down the road.
I know, I know.
How am I going to survive tomorrow?
Yes.
We just have to acknowledge that and.
Right.
When the time is right, we engage people. But if I ask people today, I'm not going to get anybody wanting to talk to me about anything. The future.
Yeah, if anything, you maybe just reflect from this year.
Yeah, exactly.
To take that going into the future.
Exactly.
That's a good way to approach it, yeah.
Do you have something, Ben? Okay. Um, so I think those are the four main topics and it sounds like we have a little bit more solidified goals now. And there's that working document, you can always add other things to. I, I don't think it, I think this is a reasonable amount. Probably this is, this is a lot.
Yeah. If we could get this nailed down for the next meeting, maybe, just so we have something to work from and.
Yeah.
Not be so fluid, constantly being fluid.
I don't know if I ever was on the board when there were goals, so, um, do we want to vote on them to, uh, you know, to say that these are the goals that we're working on or just keep it on here as a discussion?
I think a resolution is, is appropriate, you know?
Maybe.
We want the district to respond.
Notify.
We should, uh, you know, as a group, come together and, and resolve to pursue these goals.
And then we can be brought to, back to them all the time, you know, when we're making decisions.
Right, I mean, they're general, we're, we're not directing.
No.
You know, to Damian's point and, and I'm sure Marie's concerned, you know, um, you know, the, the timeline's flex, you know, it remains flexible, um, but to just put it down as, all right.
What's important to us.
This is what's the priority. You're right.
I, I agree, Ben, because I know that the board is rotating and so there could be different people, but if this is kind of established as, oh, this is what was agreed upon, you know, there's, there's a trajectory for it. And then, you know, for the committee piece, like you mentioned, Gloria, I'll try and wordsmith and put that together so that, that we can actually vote on as a standing committee.
It's really exciting. So it's something we could accomplish, you know, next week.
Yeah, say that we did something.
Yeah.
So any other, um, comments, questions? There's nothing else in the agenda, but, um, if you want board sharing ideas?
What was I supposed to remind you of?
If there's something about the, um, meeting, or no, no, the, um, pub, the book.
Oh, the handbook.
Yes.
We have, um, a few, a few suggestions for, uh, some changes in the handbook, not, not anything major. I don't think there's anything going to be, uh, putting a stop on things or a red flag. But I was wondering how we wanted to proceed. We can either, I can get the changes to everybody. We can, as a committee of the whole, look at the changes and just say, okay, we'll make them and then get the new, uh, new copy out to everybody. Uh, or we can send it back to either communications, which began the project, or another committee. It's no rule that has to be communications. But it can go back to a sub, a, a standing committee to say, bring, you look at the changes and bring back your recommendations to us. Um, so I'm, yeah, Barbara.
Um, I think the way you did the first batch, it just give us a, a one or two a meeting.
There's not very many changes.
Right.
So we could probably do them pretty quickly.
Whatever.
Yeah.
I think that worked out fine and I would just proceed.
Do it as a committee of the whole.
Yeah, yeah.
So we could just put that in the agenda as, um, maybe part of the, somewhere on the agenda, we can put it in there maybe in the president's thing and just say, this section, and I'll, I'll give it, I'll give everybody the changes and we could just look at them piece by piece. There's not that much, so we'll.
I was just going to say, if there's not that much, then if you want to just change that and send it.
I'll give you the whole. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just, I'll tell you the page it's on and what the changes are. Ben was very good about giving, giving some really nice suggestions about some wording and things like that. Um, so maybe we can bring that to a close.
Sure. Okay. Barb?
Totally unrelated.
Yep.
But this is my first non-virtual meeting. Um, why are we all masked when we're six feet apart in a huge, large room when Governor Cuomo, you know, has his things and when they're, at least when they're speaking, they're not masked? In fact, by recollection, as most of them, as long as they were six feet apart in a large room, away from each other, they didn't, other than the role model value, but it is so much easier for the audience at home if at least the speaker would take off the mask and, and speak directly. I, I just was wondering why, why we're doing it when we have all this separation and, and a large room where there's airflow and all that. So I just ask.
I mean, I wear it be more of a role model. Also, I don't go anywhere, so this is my time, I guess, to wear it. It's, I'm fine with it.